I'm half dead, mate. And you call Erickson, you're talking about two different people.
All right, we will call this meeting to order. Thank you for being here. We appreciate the attendance of all you folks here. Apparently, there's a assignment due in a high school government class.[68.73][68.73](laughter) We're glad to have you here, and we hope you learned something about city government, city and local government.[77.56][77.56](laughter) Right, we start our meetings with a prayer and a pledge to the flag, and I've asked Councilmember Colin Erickson to offer an invocation for us, after which I will ask Councilmember Reeser to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Erickson?
Our dear Father in heaven, we bow our heads this evening to give you thanks for the many, many blessings that has given to us. Father, we're so thankful for this country and for opportunity to be able to live here. We're thankful for this community, this city, and for the many blessings that come here to be in this great Rexburg area. Father, we ask you to please be with our first responders, our military armed forces that's out there, bless them and watch over them, help them in the things they do in keeping us safe and free. We ask the blessing to be upon our community, our youth in this community, and help them in the things they need, that we may continue to have a great, great area to live and continue to prosper in this area. Father, we ask you this evening to be with us, that we may be able to listen and communicate and have the Spirit be here with us, that we may be able to work through things for our city and the benefit of the city for the good. Please be with us, we ask, and bless this community and everybody in it. We ask this in newness in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
If you could please stand and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the love of the Lord Jesus Christ.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, we will start out our meeting tonight with a roll call by Mariana Gonzalez, our deputy clerk.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember C. Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Reeser.
Here.
Council President Walker.
Here.
Hey, thank you. And Councilmember Eric Erickson is asked to be excused from this meeting, is traveling today, so we will excuse him. All right, item number three on the agenda is the welcome of our new employees, and we've got two on the agenda tonight. And what we would ask of them is to come up to the podium up here and introduce yourselves to us and just tell us a little bit about yourself. So we'll start with Dalton Allen in the Streets Department. Is Dalton... Oh, there he is, right here. Okay. And you can just go to this mic right here, Dalton, that's fine, too. I guess you should check and make sure that's turned on. I'd have to flip the...
Yeah, it sounds like it's on. Yes, sir.
Is that on?
I believe so.
Okay. I mean, I can hear, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, like you said, I've just gotten pulled with the city. It's a big honor for me, something that I've kind of, my family's done, and it's something that I kind of wanted to do, so it's a big honor and I appreciate that. But like you said, my position's a street operator, so I obviously work with maintenance as far as the streets go. My name's Dalton Allen. I was born and raised here, so definitely a local, but I love anything outdoors. I'm a country boy at heart, so I feel like I'm a family man. I love my family, I love my friends. Try and keep myself honest and true, so I think that's about the gist of me. So I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and introduce myself to you guys, and I hope you guys have a wonderful evening.
Great, thank you, and we appreciate you, and we'll look forward to working with you on our city team. So let's give Dalton a hand.[315.33][315.33](applause) All right, thank you. Next is Joseph Timmel, who'll be working in the Water Department.
Good to meet you guys. I'm happy to be here and thankful for the involvement, for sure. I used to work for Smithfield City in the Parks Department for several years. Just, I was mainly in the cemetery, but I did always like fixing sprinklers and stuff and decided to get a little upgrade with the Water Department. But I grew up in a small town in Nevada, so definitely not from around here. But, and about a year and a half ago, married my beautiful wife back there, and we had our first little girl about seven weeks ago, so we're pretty...
Congratulations.
And just excited to be here, and thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Let's give you a hand.[390.21][390.21](applause) Welcome, welcome to our city team. We appreciate it. And your wife's name is?
Christine.
Christine. Welcome, Christine. Thank you. Thank you for supporting him and all of the things that he'll be doing in the next few years. And Dalton, your wife?
Um, I'm...
You're not married?
Not married.
Oh, okay, well, okay, we won't worry about your wife for right now, then.[417.21][417.21](laughter) Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Right, item number four on the agenda is a presentation. Let's see, do we, are we, do we have it teed up with the Flash Vote presentation? Scott, do you know, or Deborah?
Is he on?
I believe he's online.
We know he's traveling.
Okay. Yeah, there's a gentleman by the name of Kevin Lyons, who wanted to give us a little bit of a presentation about their company called Flash Vote. We've looked at what they do, and it's pretty cool, so we have invited him to explain what they do to you, to see what your thoughts are. And Kevin, are you there? Maybe? One second? Or one minute, maybe?
Looks like he's there.
Oh, yeah, we can see, we can see...
Hello?
Oh, okay, we got you now.
Okay, cool. Excellent. And let's see, can I share the screen? Thank you for inviting me in this evening.
Yes, I'm assuming that we can figure out a way for you to do that?
Yeah, no rush.
Panelists? We're going to make you a panelist, so you can show your...
Panelist, that's it. Yep, perfect.
We appreciate Kevin. I know he was traveling, and actually, I think in another meeting tonight, he agreed to take a few minutes out of his meeting and do this short presentation for us. And so thank you, Kevin. We appreciate you being willing to do that.
No problem. Thanks. It worked out pretty well, actually. So, yeah, so I'm Kevin Lyons, co-founder of Flash Vote, and I've got a little presentation where she could ask questions during or after, but I'll tell you a little bit about Flash Vote, which is basically a way of getting true community input, so representative sample of residents, so you always can know what the whole community actually wants, thinks, needs, prefers, and so on. And I'm going to try sharing the screen. Let's see. Oh, looks like the other participant is still sharing. So there we go. See if that works. Oh, let me know when you have the Council Chamber's screen unshared. We should... That looks good. Okay. And I think we're good to go.
There we go.
Can you guys see my screen now?
Yep, we can see it now.
Excellent. Okay, yeah, well, thanks again for inviting me to talk with you guys for a few minutes tonight. I'll give you a quick overview of the problem that we solved, and then a little bit about how we solve it. But again, you know, happy to answer any questions you have at any time. Ready to roll? All right, cool. So, yeah, public input, and I'm actually at a conference of government communicators today from all across the country, which is nice. There's this big challenge, which is, you know, how often do you think the input you get, meetings, online surveys, social media and everything, is a good match for what the whole community thinks? So you get this small number of people giving you input on an issue, is that a good match? Is that a bad match? So, all right, someone who hasn't already seen this, so the mayor's excluded, but take a guess, like, how often that is a good match, a good representation.
Councilmembers, take your guess. What do you think?
Yes, I'm going to throw it out.
How much?
Ten.
Ten percent, Councilmember Chambers says.
Ten percent.
Any other guesses?
Okay.
I guess that's it.
Over, anyone taking over ten?
We're going to go with that one.
Okay, so ten is an excellent guess, actually. So, and I think I told you guys this previously on Friday, but most elected officials go a lot higher than that, so that's a really good sign. It's a, when we looked at our first 300 and then 400 surveys and compared that to data from all these other channels of input compared to the scientific surveys, about five percent of the time, it was a match, where you had the same amount and same side of an issue compared to the public as a whole. About 25% of the time, we had a very small group that seemed a lot bigger than it was, but it wasn't dominant. It wasn't a majority of the input. And then about 70% of the time, the input you get, like, the majority sentiment from that is the opposite of what the whole community wants. So you're right in that ballpark of exactly what the problem is. And to show you an example of, like, just the details of how that works, there's a Harvard case study we were involved with, where had a bunch of grad students go to meetings and track everything everyone said, and look at what they said in an online survey, and then we did a scientific survey using our approach, where we get regular people to give input on a hot topic even, and see what happens. So they had meetings, and this is what they saw for the top two out of five things that people were interested in in a new community center, which can be a big expensive project, so they were trying to be real careful about this. You can see health and social services and more steady meeting and event space are what the meetings said people wanted. You know, clear majorities for those two things. And if you think about the demographics of a meeting, you're probably thinking it's going to be older than younger, right? And sure enough, that's what they saw. It was 81% old, over 60. And that is not a representation. That's an easy one to see with your eyes. But, okay, so that's fine. So they did an online survey, and when they did that, which that was social media and everything else, they got the same result. So same two things are the top. And what do you think the demographics were on that, older or younger than the meeting, the online survey? Anyone got a guess?
Hmm, younger.
Younger.
Younger. And you're right. Yeah, that's right. So it's a much younger, technology tends to skew younger, interest tends to skew older, actually. So very different demographics, same results. So the obvious thing is like, okay, that's cool. Now we actually have a really good sense of what the community wants. So the last step is we set up a scientific panel of residents, and that's fancy talk, for getting a bunch of regular people on board to give input on whatever topic comes up. So they had no idea there was going to be a topic about parks and rec, and this is what we got when we did that. And so three out of the five things were flipped, they were reversed, to what the other data had shown. And the reason is, this is the tricky thing, you know, you think, oh, well, maybe our demographics, maybe our age groups were very different. Well, they weren't. They were almost identical to the other, the online survey. And what that tells you is there's this thing going on where people are self-selecting because of their interest in the topic, and then taking things at a higher rate and then sharing it with their friends. You can kind of visualize this with the social media. With a meeting, it's like, hey, they know what the topic is, they're coming to the meeting because of the topic. And so those are the reasons why you end up with that, you know, 10%, 5% kind of number. So it's not as helpful as it could be, of course. So the conclusion from that study is that just traditional methods of community inter-biased, which you kind of all know. But then what do you do, right? So that's why we created Flash Vote, to create that scientific option that's really fast, too. So, you know, the core problem here is, in a typical community, you know, who are you going to hear from? The people in the middle? Probably not, right? In fact, it's okay to say it, but usually it's people who are most motivated over here, they hate something. Sometimes it's people with self-interest. And so the challenge as a human, and I get yelled at once a month for our own little public meeting we have where I live, it feels like the whole community is against something. When you go to a meeting and they all say, we hate this. But the reality is, it's a very small number of people, they're all self-selected, so it doesn't tell you anything about what the rest of the community wants. And you have to kind of remind yourself of that, and that's where the data is really helpful. Because it really feels, if you get a few people here, it feels like that's the whole curve. It feels like that's the whole distribution of people. But you're just, that's only because you're blind to like, hey, what do all these regular people think? So that's the problem Flash Vote solves. And in a nutshell, it's a way to get statistically valid community input to inform your decisions in 48 hours. So we literally designed it for the time between a meeting notice and the meeting itself, even though we don't recommend you do that. You know, use it at different steps in a process. Use it to get feedback on snow plowing at the, in the end of April or May. Use it to get park and rec information at the end of the park and rec season, when the data's fresh and when you've got time to work on stuff. It's designed to be real-time decision support for you guys. And the approach we take, I hinted at it with the panel, basically, there's a problem with calling people nowadays, where the response rates are super low, like, single digits. So we created the idea of a panel of local residents that would be on-call to answer surveys on any topic really quickly. That means we can invite them, however channels you already have, channels we can create, like postcards, or we can do SMS messages. The key is, we put messaging out there, hey, do you have one minute a month to help make Rexburg better? It can be that simple. And that gets people neutrally involved. They give, they give a little bit, they care a little bit about their community, that's all we're looking for. And then we capture all the demographics, so they don't have to answer those in surveys over and over. It keeps the surveys extra short, which is really important. And includes addresses, so we can see what parts of town, if you have an issue over here versus over here, make sure you're treating everyone, serving everyone equally, equitably. And we write the questions for you and quality control them. And so if you want to send us a draft, that's great. If you just want to say, hey, we've got this issue coming up, you know, you got any ideas? We can send you examples other cities have done. We can draft stuff up for you fresh and custom. And the key is, as an independent, you know, high-quality survey engineer, we're going to make sure that the questions are unbiased, balanced, readable, and just going to give you the data you need, the answers you want at the end of the thing. We also are inclusive, so that the platform isn't just like an online thing. You can actually participate by text only if you want, or by phone call, actually. So anyone can participate, and it's all anonymous. We don't share any of that information with you or anyone else. And this thing that we kind of figured out and started figuring out in 2013 has quickly taken over the national research firms. So a year later, Pure Research started their first survey panel, and within four years, most of their data was being collected on a panel instead of the old random sample phone calls. We still do some random sample text surveys, by the way, but it's only for really targeted, specific uses where a panel is not going to work. And so, you know, with that time, we've grown now to have customers in 35 states, and continuing to add new ones every week or two, and would love to add you. Any questions? I could also show you a real sample survey if you'd like. That'd be helpful, too.
Yeah, any sample like that would be great, just so we can, you know, see more information. But any, is there any questions from council about...
Pop one up while you're talking.
Yeah, the, probably wondering about cost. I think for our size city, I think you mentioned it's about $9,000 or $9,500 or something like that for the whole, for a whole year.
I think you guys were at $9,900 for a year?
Yeah.
Yep, and that includes all the scientific survey design and everything else.
Yeah, that covers everything. So, anyway.
Is there a limit on the number of surveys that could be conducted in that one year?
So, good question. Yeah, the, most people do two to five. The official contract will say up to six, but we like to say if you do seven, we'll give you a high five. I flew to a town near here last year, and I gave them a high five. They did eight. That was pretty remarkable, actually have that much stuff to do. But, yeah, it's really, you know, some, we can get a lot of data in each survey, so I would predict, you know, one a quarter, maybe, is what you end up doing. But, hey, room's wrong.
Typical, probably, yeah. Any other questions?
Typical.
Yes.
So this is not interactive, right? Like, there's no short answer or anything? It's all just survey, where they choose from options?
There are, there are short answers. Yeah, I'll show you that right here. In fact, we, sometimes we blend the question types. So this is one where we're basically doing a satisfaction, hey, what do you think is the strength of Rexburg? And you guys would, you know, we customize these for your, you know, your issues, the things you're most interested in, housing, physical safety's always a good one, parks, and so on. And you'll notice here, there's a, there's an other option here. So there's comments that people can fill in there. And in fact, you can click on that, see, what did they say? And what did they love? What did they say about love, right? So, yeah, and then, in this case, we also ask what's important. You can get priorities from importance versus satisfaction, and we actually show you that, too. So now you have a to-do list, basically, in this case, in this community, south of you guys. It turns out, physical safety is the biggest gap between importance and satisfaction, so it's very high importance and low satisfaction. So then you maybe do a follow-up survey on that, drill in, so how do we, how do we pick some things there? And in their case, also parks was one for that. So, yeah, good question. By the way, we actually also end with a open-ended question every survey, so the residents can say anything else that they wanted to say. They really like that. They appreciate that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Yes, go ahead.
What's your typical sample size response rate?
Yeah, good question. So, you know, we want to get to hundreds, okay, that's plus or minus 10%. 200 to 600 is the best. That's the sweet spot. And typically, we'll get like a 50% plus response rate in our sample of regular people. In this case, you can see that, 236 of 461, that's 51%, I guess. And then we do show the margin of error based on the number of responses.
Your margin of error typically is, what does that say, six, three, four, five, six percent?
Six percent, yep. Yeah, and that's what that's saying, is you're trying to estimate a percentage in a, in a whole population. And so that's a, you know, a fancy way of saying that 19 out of 20 times, if you did an estimate, you'd be within plus or minus 6% of the true population number. And that's the best you can possibly do with perfect sample and everything else. So it's a benchmark that people use in surveys, for how, you know, how good is that sample? You can't be better than that, basically.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? Okay. All right. Yeah, that's something that we don't necessarily need to make a decision on tonight. We just wanted you to see that, and then we'll, we'll talk about it a little bit more and, and then decide if it's something that we want to do. So...
Sounds good.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any other questions? Would love to work with you, and have a, have a good evening.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate you taking your time to show us that. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Not for him, just...
Okay.
So is this, we're talking, like, to replace Engage Rexburg? Is that what the goal would be?
I don't know if we necessarily would totally would replace it. I think, right, Scott? What are your thoughts on that?
No, I don't think we would replace it. I think this would just be a traditional asset.
Because Engage is kind of there all the time?
Engage is meant to really pull what people are looking at. I mean, that's open, kind of dialogue. This is really meant to be a little bit more argued about very specific things, try to get as many different views as possible, so.
And just so I understand it, Engage Rexburg is just voluntary, right?
Correct.
That's for people that are excited about something or upset about something, jump on, let their feelings be known, where this, of course, targets, okay, gets the scientifically valid numbers rather than the squeaky wheel.
And the specific subject, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, a couple, a couple ways you can think about that is, is engagement tools are good for getting input from people interested in the topic, like you just said. And they're also good for then collecting comments and ideas and, you know, any questions you hadn't asked, right? And so when you want to measure percentages in a community, that's where you do a scientific survey. So we try to get different people who are not especially interested in the topic. And that's what allows us to generalize from this sample of people to the whole community, because the people taking the survey look like the people not taking the survey.
Okay, all right, great. Any other questions that might have popped up in your mind? Anyone? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. We will talk about it some more. And at this point, right now, we will go ahead and move on to item number, let's see, we get three done, we get four, that was four. Okay, so item number five is time for public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. If there's anyone that would like to make us aware of anything in particular, we would ask you to come up to the microphone here and state your name and address, and let us know of anything you'd like us to know about. Is there anyone that would like to do so? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone online besides Mr. Lyons?
There is one person online. No questions.
No questions? All right. Okay, thank you. We will go ahead and move on to item number five, or item number s... Actually, if you don't mind, I would like to move one item up on the agenda at this point, and that is item number 7A, which is our proclamation for Constitution Week, which is September 17th through the 23rd. We have two visitors here with us tonight, Kathy Kula and Jana Vosika, right, that are members of the Daughters of...
American Revolution.
Daughters of the American Revolution. That's right, members of that organization. We're welcome you here to be with us tonight, and they're the ones that are really encouraging us to pay attention to the Constitution, especially during this, during this week of Constitution Week. And so we'd like to go ahead and read this proclamation at this time. So this is proclamation number 2024-05, declaring September 17th to the 23rd as Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting in proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Jerry Merrill, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Rexburg, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. This will be adopted by the City of Rexburg and the State of Idaho on this fourth day of September 2024, if ratified by the council. So at this time, I would accept a motion to ratify this proclamation by the Rexburg City Council. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we ratify this proclamation, proclamation 2024-05, recognizing Constitution Week.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. This, we will have September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week here in Rexburg. And one of the things we've talked about maybe is, on that morning of the 17th, we have a bell in front of our fire department. We'll see if we can do a little ceremony to ring the bell to celebrate the beginning of Constitution Week.
They rang that, I'll wait, 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM, that's right. 2:00 PM, I'm going to write that down. 2:00 PM, I'll write it here. 2:00 PM on September 17th. All right, that'll be fun. Okay, thank you for being here with us tonight. We appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and sign this, and we will make it official. Okay. All right, we will move on then to item number six on our agenda, which is our staff report. We'll start with our finance report with our CFO, Mr. Matt Nielsen. Actually, I guess we're not doing the finance report. We're doing some other discussions, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do that programming one, but. So before I jump into this first item, uh, let me just kind of give some context about what the city's been doing. So, so several years ago, we started discussing a new, um, public building, if you will. And so, so there was discussion of a police station. There was discussion of a potential joint building, maybe a new city hall. And, and at that time, what we decided to do is to create a new fund to basically start to set aside money. And we've been setting aside anywhere between three to four hundred thousand dollars a year. And then another thing that we did is, last time we went in and we did our study for impact fees, particularly for police department, we did a study that kind of looked and, and tried to estimate, you know, how many square feet they would need, what that cost would be. And then part of that impact fee, really all of it, to be honest, since that study, we've just been setting aside to also potentially go to, uh, either a new police building, a remodel of a police building, you know, there's options. And so, so just so you guys are aware, at the end of fiscal year twenty-five, I'm predicting that we'll have about two and a half million saved up between those two. The bulk of that, about two-point-one million of it, is really from general fund dollars that we've set in there. And then, of course, we're investing that. So we're actually getting a pretty good investment return on that as we go through these options, right? And so, um, when we met last time for our fiscal year twenty-five budget, you guys did put in the budget seventy-five thousand dollars in the impact fee fund. And with the thought that we would be able to use that for studies, um, hiring consultants, those kind of things, as we kind of move along through this process. And so tonight, I'll start really with the police building and kind of go through the findings that we've found. Several of you have been involved. Uh, we recently went on a tour of the Idaho Falls new facility. And then I think that we're pretty fortunate to have great businesses like Headwaters. We've worked with Hiram Pitt and several others there. And basically, they have provided free of charge what we are seeing tonight, kind of. And they're really basing it on what Idaho Falls paid on their facility plus other known contracts that they've worked with recently. And so I feel pretty confident about these numbers. So basically, what we're looking at is if we were to construct a new police building, they're recommending, uh, right around five acres. In this particular, um, study that we've done, we're showing a square footage of about twenty-four thousand. And then I would say, and I think Josh would agree with this, that, you know, we've went through each, basically each of the spaces that are needed and tried to really say, you know, what is, what do we feel like we would need? And what do we feel like we could grow into over time, right? And so the approach hasn't just been, you know, what do we need now? It's what do we need in the future as well? And, and I think that, I, I think that there's wiggle room there, right? I mean, we don't necessarily have to be at the twenty-four thousand. It could come down. There's things that we could edit, if you will, or take out. And so we went through that process and, um, basically, um, and I'm not going to go through every line item here tonight. Uh, I'm just going to go right to the bottom. But basically, you know, if we were to really build what we have kind of came up with as far as the size, you'd be right around that seventeen million mark. And then keep in mind that by the time you build this, we'd probably have three to four million dollars saved up. And so you wouldn't necessarily have to borrow the full seventeen million. You would be, um, and then what we did is we also reached out to another contact that we had.
Can I interrupt you and ask a question? That seventeen million dollar figure, excuse me, is that construction only? That, does that include property acquisition?
It does not include the property. Yeah, that's a good question. And then with the, with property acquisition, just something to kind of keep in mind, you know, there's certain things that we probably won't discuss in an open meeting just yet, especially if we're trying to negotiate with people. And so that would be something for an executive session, which we have on the schedule and we can give updates on tonight. And so, um, so then as I go in, we reached out to a contact that we've used for refinancing several times on other bonds and loans that cities had. And, um, I gotta see if I can read this thing. I guess I'll read it here. I am getting glasses, by the way, they're, they're ordered. Gosh, looking for the finance one. Yeah, C.O.P., there we go, sorry. Okay, so, so the next thing that we kind of looked at is we said, well, well, how could we afford to build this? Obviously, we don't, we don't have enough saved up. We're not going to be able to save up enough, uh, to meet their needs as, as they're in a space that, that they've kind of outgrown already. And so one of the options that's offered in Idaho is, um, they call it a C.O.P. or an annual appropriation lease is probably the most common term. And cities are able to do this. Uh, they are able to enter into terms that are over five years, which is not the case for some other entities, public entities, like counties. And basically, what you're doing is the city owns the land and then somebody comes in and actually develops and builds that building. And then you lease it back on an annual basis. And you have to appropriate that in the budget. And so let's say that you got fifteen years into it and you're like, don't want to do this anymore. You can stop paying that lease, but then you would have to give up that building to whoever had built that. And then they would be able to rent that out to somebody else for fifteen years, which obviously for them, it's pretty low risk that we're going to walk away from a building that was built specifically for us. And then as you get these, um, these rates, they're slightly higher than other rates that you would get, but not, not too bad. And so I had him go out and look at the current market. Current market on a twenty-year term is about three-point-eight-five percent. On a thirty-year, it's about four-point-three-one percent. And then basically, I said, you know, what's this going to cost a year? So keep in mind, we're only saving somewhere between three to four hundred thousand dollars a year. And so if you did it on a twenty-year, you're going to be over a million dollars a year on that payment. If you do it on a thirty-year, you're going to be about eight-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. So obviously, this, this option, unless you're willing to really shrink that footprint, is probably not going to work as a, as an option. And so the other thing that we looked at is, do we consider a general obligation bond, which you would have to go out to the public and have a super majority vote? Uh, so almost sixty-seven percent approval rate, right? And, um, you know, the approach there would be that, that we still put down a, a pretty big chunk of down payment if we can. And then let's say that we can get that cost and that size down a little. You know, then maybe you're going to the public and you're asking for eight million or ten million, whatever that number is. And then, of course, that cost could be lower. And then you, the public would just have to vote whether they're willing to, to pay that cost. And so, so really, at this point in time, if a new police station is what we desire, then I would recommend that you do pursue that general obligation route. And so next steps, really, if you're going to do that, is you would, I would suggest that you probably put out several RFQs or requests for qualifications. You know, one of those would be a contractor, designer, so construction management, general contractor that you would work with. Because you, you really would need to get a little more details than this, right? You'd probably want to have a concept drawing. You probably would definitely need to understand the costs of whatever land you purchase, what that development cost is, because that could change the cost. And then you would also want to engage an architect. And so those are kind of the two RFQs that I'd recommend. And then the other thing that you might want to consider is you may want to hire someone to help just, um, really be able to, to get that information in a way that you could get it out to the people for them to understand what we're asking for and what the real cost is to them. And so, so anyways, that, that's what I plan to present in terms of the police station tonight. I don't know if you guys, do you guys have any specific questions? Or, or do you want to take discussion on this separately than any joint buildings? Or how do you want to approach it?
Uh, any questions about, about this specifically?
So, I got one. How did Idaho Falls pay for theirs? Didn't they do some?
They, they actually did the annual appropriation.
They did?
Yeah.
And they, uh-
They call it a certificate of participation.
Pretty big area to have that additional revenue come in, so.
Yeah, they, they actually, I think, they, they annexed a bunch of property in, kind of in conjunction with this, right, I think?
Yeah, that's how they did it.
The whole big area that is bringing in some, some more revenue from, which helps.
Which, which is tough in a way, though, because if you think about it, when you go annex a lot of property, you have to service that property, which means you have to provide officers, you have to, there's operational costs that come with that. And so to take all of that money and put it into a police building, you're probably going to have a lower level of service, to be quite frank, if you were to do that method.
Okay, any other questions about this specifically? And, uh, and there, you know, like we mentioned, uh, as far as, you know, locations, things like that, 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 uh, are more confidential, we can talk about it in an executive session, so.
I've got a quick question. Um, I, this may be premature, but is there any numbers on, if, if those numbers do hold up, uh, what type, and we go with the bond, what type of tax increase that that would look at?
We, we have not done that analysis yet. And that, that would be part of this, right? Is we would have to go through and thoroughly get that information so that it's accurate and so that people understand, you know, what that cost would be to them.
Okay, thanks.
Matt, do you have an idea from the point of hiring consultants to actually getting a ballot?
Like, how long?
Yeah, how long are we looking at?
Um, you know, I, I would anticipate, I'm trying to remember, we can do in November, and is the other one May? I don't remember these dates very well, but is it May, Deborah? Do you remember? And so my guess is, my guess is that you would be best case twenty-twenty-five and late twenty-twenty-five. And then maybe even the next year in the spring.
Okay, all right, any further questions?
I just, I just have a comment. I just don't know if the public really understands how bad this is needed for a police department and how, over this timeframe, we're still in that little building and just keep jamming more officers and more for the public safety. And it's very needed and sooner than later for PD to make sure those officers are out there and be able to provide this for our community. So it's something we're very looking at, and I think we need to let the public know that and help them understand that we, we care for our law enforcement, our first responders, and we're going to try to do what we can do for them, so.
Yeah.
Let's see, seventeen million divided by how many people are here tonight? Let's see if we all throw in, you know, seven thousand dollars into the kitty. We'll have, I guess that won't work.
And I think we need to make it where the seventeen million is clear up here. It is.
We're definitely going to go down and, and sit down with our chief and, and look at what we need to do to facilitate the future plans of our city and be very smart with our tax money. We're not going to just go, let's go for the stars. We're going to go, what can we do, use and facilitate this to make sure we grow one and not have to add on? So we're going to be, try to be very smart with this as we go forward.
Yeah, and, and just real quick, there, I mean, there's, there's several approaches, right? So as I talked to, I actually spoke earlier with Hiram. You know, they, there's a lot of approaches. Some people go out, they hire architects in advance. They expend quite a bit of money, they get a design, they go out for the vote, right? Other people say, well, we don't really want to waste all that money. If people aren't willing to do it, let's just focus on, you know, what the real cost is instead of using that money to go get those designs or get too deep into that process. And so, and I, but I think that there is some level that you probably should do so that people really understand what we're asking for, right? And what, what they're, what we're going to get.
And I do believe that just what we heard just a minute ago on the flash vote, that that'd be prime time to use that for our community, really get out there what we need and let them find out what everybody's looking at, not just the four here and a four on each end of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a prime, an example of why that would be good.
Can I just say, I, I know there are some things I saw on that list. I've even spoken with the police and I know that they said that they could take those off. So, um, I think that that number could go down. Um, and, and I agree with what Councilmember Erickson said. I feel like the police, you know, they really are the backbone of our community and we need to take care of them. And, um, we've sat with them and we've seen a long list of the things that, that they need because their needs are not being met. And so I feel like this really is a huge priority for our city right now, so.
Yeah. So I, I think what, what we would be looking for as staff from you then is direction. If you want us to, to move forward and pursue those RFQs, I think that would be your next step to keep this thing rolling.
Well, I think that's-
I think so.
I think that's, is that the general consensus?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You want to go?
Okay, we can do that. Okay, and then, um, on the other one, Scott's here as well, so if things come up, he's been involved. So, so many, many, many years ago, we kind of brought up this concept of, of having a joint facility, municipal facility. And so when you think about that, that could be city, that could be school, that could be county included. And there's, there's several reasons for it. One, one is that if you can consolidate into smaller footprint, then you can get other properties back on the tax rolls. The other one is that, um, you know, for our customers or for our patrons, there is some benefit to be able to go really just to one place. And it's like, these guys are in this wing, these guys are in this wing, and these, these others are here. There's also opportunities for us to have some joint spaces. So for example, like, like a council chambers, maybe you have one council chambers and just through scheduling, you can, you can have your meetings. And so you're not building three of these large gathering areas. And so, so anyways, that, that's been a discussion. We've discussed it, you know, in budget meetings several times. I know, you know, Scott mentioned that as you look at our fifty-year plan, that's one of the things that we're trying to do is, is to really get, um, you know, you have all this property in our prime real estate downtown owned by, by nonprofits or, or city or county or school or university, right? And so the idea is if we can get that back on the tax roll kind of to its highest and best use, there's a, there's a real benefit in terms of the, the tax, property tax that comes back that then can go back into these services like police. And so that's, that's really been the discussion. The only action that I would say from a finance standpoint is, is that we've started to save for one of the other of these buildings, right? And, um, you know, in recent, recent months, um, the county has hired a consultant. They have, uh, basically pulled in representatives from the city, the school, the county. And they're, they've had discussions. I think it's maybe once or, I think, I've only been to a few of them, but I think it's about once a month they'll meet. And, um, I'm not sure how long the joint discussion has been going on, but each of those entities has been discussing that possibility. And so, so anyways, that, that's also part of it. There's nothing that's been decided at this point. It's just all been discussion to see if these entities have an interest in pursuing that, so.
Okay.
I've got a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've got a quick question about that. My understanding is the school district just announced that they're putting, uh, the district office up for sale and requesting bids for that with the intention of building a new district office near the high school. So does that change the discussion at all? Or are they still considering a possibility? I, I guess I'm just trying to make sure if they're out, it makes it seem like the option of the three entities coming together and doing something not terribly realistic. Plus, I don't want to get ahead of the needs of the police and, and those types of things either. I just kind of want to make sure I'm understanding the priority.
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, they have, I don't think they've communicated to us where they would build it, but they did release an RFP. They also, didn't they, I think they released it last year as well.
Yeah.
And they did not get any responses.
Didn't get any bids, but, yeah. And, and I think, I think, uh, I, I don't want to speak for them, but in our meetings, they've, you know, they're, they're still looking at options. You know, they, they were saying, well, we could build it out there, we own the land. Or we could maybe, you know, do- They they were saying, well, we could build it out there, we own the land, or we could maybe, you know, do, do it over on the other property. Or, you know, they're, they're still looking at options, as far as I understand now. Maybe they've talked about things more specifically than than I understand. But we're, we're, we're in those, in our meetings with them, we've just been talking about possibilities and different options, so. Yeah.
And and I just wanted to point something out. I know I've already spoken to staff about this, but, you know, I met with the, I I spoke with the county. I found, they were able to give me the minutes from three meetings since June where this has been discussed. And in the minutes, it, like, on 6/24, it says that, you know, these three entities met. It says that all entities are interested. It said that they were going to meet again after each entity was able to meet with their governance group, and that would be us, and we weren't met with. And then on 7/16, I was able to get the minutes from Christine. The county helped me get those minutes. It said again, she, she wrote a little blurb above the note, above the minutes, and it says, each entity's governing body has been kept in the know about the meetings and has encouraged the discussion. And I just wanted to point out that I have never been part of one of those discussions. I don't know about the rest of the council. And so all I, all I'd like to say is that moving forward, I hope that our governing body really is kept in the know on this project because apparently it was, you know, relayed that way in those meetings. And I don't know about you guys, but I, I didn't know it was happening. So moving forward, I I would like the council to to be included.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I I guess, it seems like, it seems like we've been talking about it for so long that I kind of assumed that everybody kind of knew, and and there wasn't really anything decided. So I, you know, I guess, you know, we probably should have been better about updating you on what we've been talking about. But I, I kind of thought we had. I thought we had talked about it maybe more informally a lot of times, but maybe not as much as I'm thinking. So we, we can do better on that. And that's why we scheduled the meeting tonight, too, so. Yeah. So, okay. Any further questions on that?
Mayor, I'm, I'm not totally against that idea coming up, come up, the joint building type idea, but I'm, I do have some reluctance. I'll tell you that, to be able to put, I mean, right now, we could all work together. What's 10 years down the road? Are we going to still all work together? I've seen entities that they put walls down between them in the, in the few years, and they won't talk to each other. And I don't want to see that happen here. I think we need to be open to that. If that's a possibility, then let's build our own stuff. But I'm not totally against it, but we need to be careful so we don't send down for our future people that's here on the board and the future officers and and school district, whoever we might work with, the county, that all of a sudden we cause mountains to be divided between us. So just, just we've got to be careful that direction. Because I've, I've seen it in other entities already.
I mean, obviously, it can happen, but it's not like we're going to be sharing the same house. I mean, we did, I mean, there's a lot of concepts here that could be done, and we're, we're looking at different concepts. But, you know, if, personally, I think cities and counties and school districts need to be able, need to be able to work together. And I, I think this would probably help to, help them to ensure in the future that they can work together. I mean.
And that could be.
You know, yeah. Anyway, that's really, it's all still just discussion at this point, so. Okay, let's, let's go ahead and move on to item number two, which is, which is a thing that nobody's interested in. That's pickleball, right? That was, that was, that was a joke. Okay. Item number B is talking about the pickleball courts and what our options are there. We have some options to discuss.
Let me, let me provide a little context on this as well. So we put a budget in, I think it was 370 or 375, I can't remember. And we were, our intent was to actually to build a four-court pickleball court over by Don Joe Fields, right? We put it out to bid, really the optimal court, in our opinion, it would be a post-tension, very similar, but but bigger than what BYU Idaho just built. Ours would have had more back area, more side area. And then we received no bids on that, but we did have one of the contractors come back. And, you know, the price landed probably right in the mid-500s. And so we basically said, wow, we, we probably can't afford to pay that much for four courts at this point. And so we started looking at other options. One of the discussion points that came up is, is there something that we can do with the tennis court at Smith Park, which is not in the greatest shape? In fact, I had one of our part-time employees go out and measure, and there's over 700 feet of cracks in it. And so, and then I talked to the last person that resurfaced it, probably over 10 years ago, Coke, and that's the one that declined to bid. And he just basically said, I'm not going to bid that project because the last time I fixed it, it was on its last leg. And and he said, I just think that you'd be better off to save the money and put it towards a new facility, is essentially what he said. But we did talk to some other providers that felt like they could, could definitely do the work and rehabilitate, if you will, the court, not rebuild, and that we could get some life out of it. Every one of them pretty much said the cracks are going to show up pretty fast. Many of them said probably within the first freeze thaw cycle or winter, you'll start to see some cracks. Now, the extent of how much those cracks will affect play to be determined. You know, we've had really amazing luck, I would say, at the nature park, because that's asphalt that's been, I think, almost 25 years it's been there. And we went in and resurfaced that in 2018 and built those courts. And and they're not perfect. That's something that we probably need to look at in the near future to do some maintenance there. So anyways, we put it out there. We talked to, I probably talked to six different contractors over the last week about it. I only got three bids back to essentially go in and do the best, you know, basically the best removal of the old acrylic and then crack seal and try to level and repaint with acrylic job that they can do, with pretty much no guarantee that those cracks are not going to come right back. Not as severe, those cracks wouldn't come back as severe, but over time, they would, you'd eventually have what you have now, right? And so the first one was final cut. And if you'll recall, final cut was the lower bidder, if we were to go down or go the quartile path, which we did get feedback from that. I think several people were here tonight that had some feedback on that. We provided that email to you guys. You know, their concern with that, and and if I miss something, just let me know, but was just the way the ball skips. We have heard from a few people that sometimes they're, they're pretty slippery when wet. And then just, just the, they're just, in their mind, kind of a substandard choice, if you will. The acrylic is is more optimal. And so the reason why we put it out to bid so quick and tried to get back to you was we really wanted to say, well, what, what is the option just to to do this acrylic fix? And maybe we get three years, maybe we get six years out of it. We don't know. Surprisingly, I thought they would all be kind of in that 80 range. We kind of already knew final cut's number, but they actually increased it a little. They came back at about 84,000. I have added a little contingency, 10%, just for the unforeseen, which seems to always happen. And then Sport Surface Pros came in, and they came in at 60,000. And then one of the things that they talked about is, you know, these first, this first group, and then I think Sports West maybe as well, because they bid how we had written up the specs, talked about this Guardian product or patch. Now, when I talked to Coke, who last fixed the courts, he basically said, I used that product last time. And as you take that acrylic off, you're going to find a lot more than 700 feet of cracks. Because like, because I did a pretty good job on some of those cracks, and you're going to see them. And so these guys came back, though, and they said that they actually recommend a different thing that's called a, it's a, it's a Fortress Poly Mesh. And essentially, I have a picture of it. Let me show you the picture real quick. Okay, right there. So basically, they roll it out, and then they, it bonds together, and then they paint over it. And she, she recommends this process over the other. I said, well, what's the cost difference? And she said, same price. Doesn't matter which one you do. But she highly recommended this because this is more, you know, when you do that other product, you're going to have basically a little bit of product over those cracks. And eventually, that, that's going to start to show and wear out and then eventually crack open. They're not saying that this won't do the same, but this, this is more like, she says, it basically bonds the whole court together instead of just in pieces everywhere. And so that's why they highly recommended this process. So anyways, that's our choice, if we wanted to go with either. And, but she recommends that one. Sorry, Deb, I need to get back to that. There it is. And so they came back at 60,000. The only difference, or let me hit the last one, and then the last one came back at 83809, which was Sports West. And they had also provided us a lay-down quartile option as well. So the one thing that we did do is we said, well, we would like to try to get it done this year. Pretty much everybody said best case is probably going to be October to mid-October. And the one that is the low bid, Sport Surface Pros, she just basically said, we're booked till next April or May. So if you want us to do it, you'll have to wait till spring and get on our schedule. The school districts had really good luck with Sport Surface Pros. I talked to Jordan Busby. That's who they use. They highly recommend them. And so it's really up to you guys. I mean, one, the other option is you don't do anything. So you could spend nothing. You could spend 60, 60 to 66,000 and see if we get a few good years out of it. And you could even reconsider the tiles down the road if if maybe they get better in five or six years, who knows? Either way, that that tennis court is really in a state that it, it's not very good. And so, so anyways, tho- those are the options. I don't know if you have specific questions, but, you know, we're, we're willing to do what, what you want.
Yeah, questions, comments?
I was confused about the poly mesh stuff. I'm so sorry. Is that its own thing? Or is that one of those where you paint the acrylic on the poly mesh?
So they roll it down. What they do is they roll it down over the existing surface, right? And and they do still have to probably do some repair, like if you have a lot of uneven spots. But then they roll that down, and then they paint over it. So, I mean, the finished product is going to look very much the same as as what it looks like now with hopefully not all the big cracks, right? So.
It's probably kind of similar to, you know, when they do, in the technology now, when they do new road construction, you know, they'll dig down to the base, and then they'll lay kind of a similar product out to kind of help keep the, it it kind of spreads the tension out so that, you know, it kind of, it, you don't get as much sinking in certain spots. And so it kind of ties it all together a little bit. And then they, and they put the surface over top of that. So, you know, yeah, Jordan said that they had really good luck with this company on their tennis courts. So they gave us a good recommendation for them.
Yeah.
I'd like to see us go with that option and take that money that we save and put it toward some new ones.
Yeah.
Rather than spend 135,000 for tiles, let's spend the 66 and get an acrylic that's going to work.
Yeah. Okay.
That's what my opinion is, that instead of going with the, after reading the letters and seeing what people play on it, say, instead of going with the, putting down the tiles, let's probably use that first one and do the mesh. Even if we have to wait till April, it's okay, because we finally doing to do something with those courts. Right now, we can't use them. We can't get out there and use those courts at all. So it'd be better to wait a few months and do it the right way and to move forward in that direction.
Well, people can still play, I mean, that's not very good with the cracks, but I have seen people playing tennis over there so they could use them for the rest of the fall, you know, playing tennis.
I hardly ever see anybody over there on them.
Not very often, yeah. I've, I've seen people.
High school, they go to.
Not very much.
Junior high, but I hardly ever see anybody. I think they will now we get these up to running, though, use them.
Yeah. I, I was surprised. I, I probably went over like 10 times during this whole process. And I'd say 25% of the time, there was somebody on them.
Yeah, yeah, you'll see them once in a while. But, yeah.
Sorry, I just have one more question. And so the poly mesh does not impede the play at all? Is it, does anyone know, any of the pickleball people know?
I, I don't know of any courts around here that are on that poly mesh surface unless the, unless the high school is a poly mesh surface now, it's great.
The, the high school's post-tension, isn't it? Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the concrete itself within the layer.
Oh, yeah. Well, I, I don't think, you wouldn't put a poly mesh down on a concrete surface. It's, it's really just an attempt to fix a substandard base like asphalt that's falling apart.
If you look at those options, it, it, it does, but it says it can do, it sounds like a much better option.
Yeah, yeah. And I think our feeling is that it's probably not a long-term option, but it's a, it's a shorter, less, your shorter-term, less expensive option. And it gives us the ability to take the money that we save and keep it in a, in a savings account for the bigger, better courts. And then we can hopefully add money to that over the years, over a few years, and be able to build some nice new ones over there where we intended to and, and be able to do something that's more permanent. But this will at least give us more courts available for the next, who knows? I mean, it, it's kind of funny because these companies will say, oh, you know, you have to resurface these every three to four years. But we've generally gotten five or six or seven years out of things, and they still look pretty good. I mean, like Matt said, the ones at Nature Park are in need of some attention now. As you probably know, there's a few cracks starting to appear. But, but they lasted us quite a while for, for what we were able to do there. So, so anyway, that's kind of the, I think that seems like it's kind of the, the general consensus of the group. Let's see, is this an action item? It is an action item.
I got, I got one more question. Does that include any fencing?
Yes, yeah, the fencing's in there. But but then I should probably add that, remember, this is using the existing footprint. So your back courts are probably going to be more like seven to seven and a half feet. We did talk about extending it, but we just felt like that cost was too high. It was like 40 something thousand dollars.
What you get out of it, yeah.
Yeah, you just don't, to get a couple feet, so, on each court, right, in the back court. So anyways, that, that's using the existing footprint.
This will give us six courts, right?
Yep, six courts.
Yep.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll have some more fencing to what you see at Nature Park. And then they'll just, they're going to address the outside fence. They're not going to replace it. They just put some new clips on it and make it look.
Just fix it up a little better. Okay. Any further discussion or questions or anything?
So then those first two options was the only difference besides the price, that one said they could do it now and one in the spring. Is that basic, that's the basic difference?
That, that's correct. I mean, I don't know if the first one would do the poly mesh. And if I'm hearing you guys right, you're probably in favor of trying the poly mesh.
If the pickleball people think that that's.
Yeah, I mean, these people, they've been in, I think they've been in business, I think it was like 2012 or 2014. But they, they basically run crews all over the nation. This is what they do. It's their business. It's all over the nation. And so I, I think they know a lot better what to do than we do.
Yeah. Okay, well, with that, is there, I guess, if you want to go that direction, I would entertain a motion to, to approve, go in that direction with Sport Surface Pros. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I still move that we go with Sport Surface Pros on the resurfacing of the tennis courts at Smith Park for pickleball.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second Matt's using that poly mesh, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, seconded by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion or questions?
I just have one. Okay, and so then we really will save the rest so that we can build some new courts in the area that we talked about by the quad.
So it's up to you guys. I mean, when you say the rest, if you want to take your reserve down below 25%, you could probably reserve the other 310,000, but you might not want to go all the way to there. And so that's, as we get a little closer to ending the year, we'll go do those transfers really like within the month after, month or month and a half after the. really like within the month after, month or month and a half after the end of the fiscal year. And so I can come back to you guys and kind of show you where it would be. And if you just want to choose a number, then we can set that aside.
Yeah, that's probably a good discussion for another time, more of a budgetary thing. And then we can decide, you know, how much we want to put in the savings and much you want to keep in reserve and, and then what we want to start saving, you know, we can do that in budget time too, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, there is a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We will go ahead and go that direction. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Matt?
Nope.
All right, thank you. All right, so item number seven on the agenda is the mayor's business. And basically, that was the proclamation. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. We hope you that you learned something.
We got Keith.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I already crossed him out. I guess he's had a lot. Yeah, I skipped B, Public Works with Keith Davidson. We have a review and approve the utility rate study consultant for an RFP selection. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Mayor. So just add one action item for the council tonight, and that is just, we went out for an RFQ, so request for qualifications to look at doing a utility rate study. So that's basically, Matt and I get together and we look at our utility rates and we go over what those costs and what adjustments should be made. What we're looking at is just having an outside consultant look at what we've been doing over these past years, looking at that and just making sure that everything we've been doing is the right way, if there's things that need to be adjusted on it. And so basically, we only had one company respond on that RFQ. It's FCS, a Bowman company. They're out of Redmond, Washington, but they've done several cities in Idaho for a utility rate study. And so we're recommending that we start the negotiation process to get a contract before council and use them as a consultant.
Keith, do we know why there was only one?
We published out there, it was the one that we've visited with, so we didn't have other ones necessarily on there. So I can't for say, for sure say why we only had one, but we feel comfortable with them.
Do you? Yeah, well, and sometimes you worry about, you know, are we, are we getting hooked a little on cost because there was only one? But when they do their bids, they don't know they're going to be the only one, so.
Well, it's actually not a, not a cost yet that we have. So we just enter into the contract with them and then they'll put a cost with that contract and then we can come back to the council.
And then we negotiate that.
Yeah, and we can look at that and then make sure it fits within kind of what we have set aside and budgeted for that process.
Okay. Right. Any questions about that? Yeah.
Is it every five years? How often do we do these?
How often do we do this?
I don't think there's a study that, like this, that we do every, because we haven't, to my knowledge, we've never done one. Do you know of one, Matt, before?
I think typically in the past, we've kind of just sort of compared ourselves to other cities internally, right? Isn't that kind of what we've done?
No. I mean, we have a whole process that we go through for this. And it's been developed over the years with, you know, finance, public works, with the attorney, with, you know, the department heads and wastewater and water. So I, I mean, it's really just been a process that was over many decades, kind of enhanced and developed and.
What's the advantage of the process that we've been doing over having them do this and spending the money to do it?
It's kind of like an audit of just coming in and taking a look of how we've been doing it. And then they can say, hey, that looked, you guys are doing a great job and that, that's perfect. Or they might come back and say, here's some adjustments we feel like you should make on that utility rate study.
Yeah, and there, I'm pretty sure we included cap fees too, right? Or did we just stick to?
Yeah. No, I think, I mean, that would be all part of the contract when we negotiate, because we'll have a contract laid out exactly what they're going to be looking at for us on that, so.
Because there's really two processes, right? You're creating a process each year to how much you're going to charge users that use the services, right? But then you're also creating a charge for those that are going to connect to the service, which is a capacity fee. And so, so it would be good to look at both those. And then, you know, one of the things that Keith has brought up, is there a way to kind of do a look back to make sure that people aren't actually using more capacity than they purchased? And so that's going to be part of this study is to see if that's even feasible and if we have the software that can even do that. But that, it's just, and that's all things that we would work out with the consultant and see if they have experience doing, because we don't.
Okay. All right, is there any further?
Mayor, I have one question. And in this study, can we utilize them to study what we've charged Sugar and Nudel on this to help us out to understand if we're charging that right compared to other cities in the nation?
Yes. It'll be included there because it's all, all their rates.
Okay, that's.
Sugar City, Teton.
Sugar and Teton, yeah.
Right.
That sounds good.
As well as our residents.
Yeah. And we can share that with them, which will be helpful too. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve this, this RFP.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right, RFP, yeah. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead with that RFP and get.
Just one other heads up for you. We're going to be looking at our fall cleanup, October 21st through November 11th.
October 21st through November 11th, okay. It's good to know. People oftentimes ask about that, so it's good to know that.
Keith, I don't want to put you on a hot seat there, but could you tell us the construction, where we're at and when?
You're talking about ITD?
Just, just to help us out, so when we get phone calls.
Well, the latest, latest I have, I can get to that. So they are hoping to pave the middle interchange, so Highway 33 and US 20. So they're hoping to pave that Saturday, Sunday, till they skid a lane of traffic open. There's still going to be all the curbing and all that in.
So it'll be kind of like the south one was, where they have to close lanes every now and then to work on stuff. But at least one lane.
Yep. And as far as I know, they're still looking, I mean, obviously they're still working on that, those concrete barriers on the south interchange. And then they're still looking at, over the potato harvest for that second lift to go in on that south interchange. Their contract goes all the way till, I think, the end of October for full completion.
Is that second layer of asphalt on the south et cetera, and the Main Street one for that matter, is that kind of the final, final touches on those or would there be additional work to be done?
Depends on what they get done, but I imagine there's still work to be done. There'll still be landscaping rock that needs to come in, the plantings and things like that, so.
Would any of that require lanes to be closed or is that?
Yeah, yeah, when they're working in those islands, generally they're going to want a little extra room as they move things around. So yeah, there would be lane closures on that. But I think if, once we get the middle interchange open, that should help alleviate some pressure on that south one.
The color is definitely a lot better on the south.
You like that better?
On the south, a lot better. And I've heard a lot more comments about that.
I can tell you the superintendent and assistant superintendent like it much better. They didn't really like that rugby yellow on the, rugby gold.
Mr. Mayor, after we discussed that, I literally was driving through there and saw you with the Idaho Department of Transportation people out there on the sidewalk.
Yeah, we had, we met out there and had a discussion about that and changed colors. So, so the other one will be changing, but it may take a while to get, to get it off and repaint it, so.
And can I just ask, so when they put that second layer on, do they totally close it again? Both lanes? Yeah.
Yeah, they'll have to shut it down to get that second lift in there.
Yeah. But the paving, once they get all of the, those, the concrete barriers and stuff done, that paving goes down pretty quick. It doesn't take very long to do that, right?
Yep.
And you say just two days that they'll probably have it done out here.
Yeah, and we're also looking, when they, when they do do that second lift, fixing some things over there by Rexburg Motorsports. We had an infiltrator that's failing over there and so there's some asphalt and repair to that infiltrator that needs to happen during that time.
Let's take a flash vote. Are you high school students here, you haven't had any traffic delays going to school in the mornings, have you? See how well things are working?
Though I do think that it does need to be entered into the record, that there might be a few of them that are tardy because they got up late that are blaming.
Oh, yeah, that could be.
And using that as an excuse, but.
Our students wouldn't do that, I don't think. Okay.
Never mind.
Good. Okay, any further questions for Keith? Anything?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, item number six, mayor's business, just a couple of things. One, Councilmember Johnson, have you received any communication from John about a meeting? Yeah, I think that that'll probably be, look, look for that. I think he was talking to me about trying to do it next week. So if you don't hear from him fairly soon, let me know and, or just contact him. Because I think he's trying to get it set up for next week is what he mentioned to me, so.
Mayor?
Yes?
We actually just spoke. I think you wanted to meet internally next week, but they'll set the meeting up next week, but it'll probably be for the fall.
Okay. And can, could he just, I would like him to find out what time works for everyone so that, because I want to be there, but I work in the day, some of the days of the week.
Yeah, what we'll probably have him do is maybe send out one of those, what do you call them, vote things where everybody can say this time and this time and this time and that kind of a thing, so that we can try to make it the best time for everyone. Okay, the other item is just, I would just mention, I attended what we call a community partners meeting today where we, once a quarter, we meet with the school district, the BYU Idaho representatives. Thank you Brett Crandall for being in charge of that and appreciate your work there. We have the library, Madison Library, and let's see, who else? The Sugar School District and the mayor of Sugar. And who else do we have there? Is that, that's about it?
The Chamber.
Oh, the Chamber of Commerce, yeah. So we try to pull as many entities together as we can and coordinate our activities, you know, let each other know what we're doing and all that kind of a thing. And so, and it's, it's really cool. It's a good, good organization. It helps us to, to, you know, just be able to know what each other's doing and try not to step on each other's toes as much as we can, kind of a thing. So, so anyway, we do that once a quarter. And we will be hosting that here in the council chambers in January if anybody wants to attend.
Mayor, I was just going to ask if we could be notified of those meetings.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I will make a note here of notify council if anyone wants to attend. Okay.
If you're going to be doing that in full form, then you've got to watch the forums, so otherwise we'll have to have to end that and post that.
Yeah, we would, yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to post that if we get more than, more than three there, so. But we'll see how that goes. What's that?
We'll just have to limit the number.
Yeah, and we might have to do that.
Who gets along with for all that time?
Yeah, typically those kind of meetings, we don't have that many people that can come to them during the day anyway, so it probably won't be a problem, but we'll, we'll just have to watch that. Okay, item number eight. Item number seven, we don't have any. Item number eight, we have second reading. We have ordinance number 1320 is the amendment to the Rexburg Development Code, ordinance number 1200 as it pertains to fences and billboards as well as other substantive and non-substantive items. And just to explain to our high school students here, we, each time we pass an ordinance, we actually consider it three times before it's final. So we discuss it, as we did some of these things tonight, we discuss it and debate it back and forth and then if it passes, it's considered first read. Now, like we're doing tonight on this ordinance number 1320 about fences and billboards, we'll vote on it again. This will be considered the second reading and then in our next meeting, we will vote on it one more time and that will be considered third read. So, you know, government tends to move kind of slowly on purpose because we want to make sure we're doing things as right as possible. So, you know, if there's anyone, if there's something someone wants to bring up about one of these ordinances that they've learned about or that they feel different, they've maybe changed their mind or something that they want to discuss, we can open that discussion for these on the second and third readings and talk about them again and before we vote on them. So that's, that's what these second and third readings are all about. Okay, so, item ordinance number 1320, I would entertain a motion to consider this ordinance second read.
I will make a motion that we consider ordinance number 1320 second read.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Second by Councilmember, Reece, sorry. I've had a brain cramp there for a moment. Okay, any further discussion or questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion is considered second read. Third readings, we have three, ordinance number 1317, which is the rezone of 250 North, 12th West and 1022 West Main Street from Transitional Agriculture and Mixed Juice to Community Business Center. This ordinance number 1317, I would entertain a motion to consider it third read.
Mayor, I'll make that motion, this 1317, third read.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Council President Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ordinance 1317 is considered third read. Ordinance number 1318, the amendment to the Rexburg Development Code, ordinance number 1200 as it pertains to RV Park, permitted uses for CBC and other substantive and non-substantive items. Is there any discussion, or sorry, is there a motion to consider 1318, third read?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider ordinance number 1318, third read.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will consider 1318, third read. Item number three is ordinance number 1319, fiscal year 2024 budget amendments amending ordinance number 1300, the fiscal year 2024 budget appropriation. Is there a motion, is there any discussion on this before we move forward? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion on ordinance 1319.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 1319 and consider it third read.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ordinance number 1319 is considered third read. Item number nine on the agenda is our consent calendar, which is the minutes from the August 21st, 2024 meeting and the approval of the 2024 beer and wine license list, as well as the approval of the city of Rexburg bills. Is there any discussion or questions about any of these items?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to bring the council's attention to, there's a new addition on this list. Gringos has completed their application of the state and county and have applied for approval tonight as well as a new, it's, it's, it's brand new, so.
So there's the list, okay.